Welcome everybody to the zoning border review, November twentieth meeting. Like to call request roll call here. Mr. Di Martino can lead off.
Mark.
Paul Lohrenso present.
Sue Horowitz present.
Andrew Kelly present.
Eric proposal chairman is present. Welcome, everybody. Next item on the agenda we have this this evening are the approval of the September eighteenth minutes as well as the approval of October sixteenth. Yes, we'll we'll take them one at a time. Can I get a second to approve the September eighteenth meeting minutes?
Good seconded.
All in favor?
Hi.
November, October sixteenth. Any second? All in favor?
Hi.
First item on the agenda. Would be David Martin applicant for Pierolino and Nestella. Excuse my pronunciation of this, but Babu owners of property located zero Prince Henry Avenue. Tax assessor map sixty-eight lot three G. Seeking a dimensional modification to build a new dwelling located within the front setback. This petition has been approved. Administratively, so we don't really need to go any further with this. Just the formality to kind of read it off. So moving along the next petition, we have Grant Amsterdam applicant and owner for property located at seventy-two Camaro Drive tax assessor map eighteen lot eighty-one. We're going to build one hundred and ninety-two square foot shed located in the side yard. Encroaching into the side front and rear setbacks. Somebody you'd like to approach? Come on, come on up. Welcome. Stick your name and address for the for the record, please.
My name is Grant Amsterdam. I live at seventy-two Camaro Drive. The light is on.
Late time? Okay, tell us.
All right. So I'm trying to replace the shed that was in my yard. The old one was rotted and fell down. The lot is an odd corner lot. With I know virtually no backyard. So I need I'm requesting a variance to the ordinance that says I have to build in my backyard because I don't have one also. Trying to maximize the usable space of my yard, so putting the new shed towards the south end of the lot. Where the lot gets skinny, so I need requesting variance to the front, rear and side setbacks.
Okay, thank you. I straightforward to me. I don't really have any questions that you guys, anyone from the board have questions? I see it's kind of a tight, tight lot, unique situation where you've got a few factors, you know. Just a leaf field tank. Shape of the lock kind of restricts you to my opinion, that being probably the most suitable spot for shed on the property. I'll leave it up to you guys.
I just have one question. The building materials, you have any elevation? So pictures of what it is that you're the shed's gonna look like?
I excuse me, I don't with me. It's gonna be a standard wood kit shed from Home Depot on a concrete pad. It'll be painted to match the house.
You can't. Yeah.
And can good? Are you okay?
No, I'm good.
And the letter of support is that your immediate neighbor in lot seven? Sean McKenney?
I believe he's two lots down. Shed. There is none. It will be, I mean, relatively close to the property line, obviously, which is why I'm here. But in talking with the Buckley's, they do not mind. They they support the project.
Right, the butters interested parties wish to speak. Anyone online?
No.
No? Okay. I guess I asked if anyone would like to make a motion?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to approve. I think based on like your neighbors, where you're putting that shed, there's trees right behind it. So it's not directly in front of your neighbor's house. No one's gonna see it. It looks like a little empty space. Think you took as much into consideration as possible. And I think I'd take much motion to approve.
Second. Motion has been made to and seconded for this. Any other discussion? Chair makes a motion. To approve, sorry, a long day.
Asks for motion.
Ask for motion to approve. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All against? Hey. What did I skip something?
It's fine, but you probably should ask somebody else to make the motion and then second.
Didn't he make the motion?
Oh, he did. Sorry, I was I was right, forget it.
Little eagle eye over there.
They're making a motion, so I got confused.
So you've been you've been approved unanimously.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thanks.
The double motion.
Next item on the agenda with night, you have Ralph McCuskey. Park located seventy Bayview Ave. Tax assessor map six lot thirty-nine. It seeks a special use permit and a dimensional variance to build in addition to a non-conforming structure in a residential zone located in setbacks.
Thanks, hi.
Just naming just for the record, please.
Sure, Ralph McCuskey seventy Bayview Avenue.
You're looking to do, I see, here to design with.
Sure. Basically, just trying to bring back and restore a nineteen twenty-five cottage that I want to move in with my wife and three kids and it's I didn't want to demo it and build the new structure. I like I like it as it is, but just was looking for more square footage for a couple more bedrooms. And it seemed that the way to keep the true character of the house was just going up over an existing garage. So that's what I'm proposing. There's a teeny little bit of extra interior space added in the expanded breezeway, but the the goal was to keep it pretty much as is. I mean, the siding windows, it's in pretty rough shape, so it'd be doing the entire exterior as well, but yeah, no, we love it. Trying to keep yard space, didn't want to expand on the other side. Don't think it it impacts any views. But it's within the side setback, so that's why I'm here.
Yes, and he brushes off the bat from the board.
Is there an existing garage that's already in the setback and you're just building over it?
It is, yeah.
Okay. Be Google mapping now?
No, no worries.
We just we've had, we just wanted to clarify something.
Sure, absolutely, no.
I apologize.
No worries.
So let me ask you, so this is gonna be your primary residence?
Yes.
Want for rental?
No, 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 no.
I remember this house, face toward the road.
Really?
Where did you get? So so the reason why we're, you know, is it's intensifying, I guess, to clarify the I'm taking the four, but it's intensive because the rock being a sun non-formal, but we're decreasing the square footage of it. He's all new.
Sure.
So anything, you know, not conforming that's being.
Well, I know when I was on the zoning board of appeals in West Springfield, Massachusetts. Okay, well, this is what's known as an extension of a pre-existing non-conforming structure, and as long as there's no substantial derogation to the neighborhood, it ought to be granted, and that's how I feel. But I am not voting on this because I'm the alternate member in the but thank you.
I know.
My performance. Your microphone.
So you guys have any questions? I just I just got taught a lesson today.
Sorry.
I was concerned, to be honest, that it would be like maybe short term rental or something, but I can see your staircase is you can't really separate private to you. It can't be separated for short term rental, really, because your staircase is part of the main space.
There's absolutely no no intent to rent any bit of it ever.
No, I think it's I mean, I think it's a great design. I think keeping with original structure. Yes, you know, I guess we'll ask for butters interested parties.
Mr. Hitchen, if you're there, you can unmute. Are you there?
Hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, James Hitchen eighty-two Bayview Avenue. I'm just curious about when I looked at the special use permit and dimension variance that was submitted to you. That the setback is it's one foot nine inches from the property line. On the sheet that was given to me, it said that the side yard variance is nine foot. It's a twelve foot variance, meaning it's supposed to be twelve feet. And he's asking for nine feet. However, it's actually ten feet, three inches. If my math is correct, if it's only one foot, nine inches from the property line. It seems to me it's not a nine foot variance he wants. He wants ten foot, three inches. Is that correct?
Which one are you referring to?
I'm referring to site. The picture on my PDF is a site. In the shows the dimensions of the building to be one foot, nine inches from the side variance, which is his variance of what he wants. With with Ralph wants. There's an existing garage two feet from that, so the line, he's one foot, nine inches from the property line on the garage. Can you see that on the PDF? I mean, on the site plan?
Yep, yep.
That's pretty close.
Footprint, yeah, that's the existing, yes.
But my question is, why would it be? He's asking nine foot. Why wouldn't it be ten feet, three inches?
That could be could have been an oversight.
Well, it's a serious oversight. It's something that you should be looking at. I think. Nine nine feet? So it's still one was the is the distance off the property line still one foot nine?
Yeah.
But the ask is is not nine feet, it's ten feet, say, right? So it's the increased. In this, this is the existing garage, right? We're not knocking it down, moving anything or increasing the footprint of anything besides the what's between, so to speak, right?
Is it the math there and it being an undersized lot? So instead of being the full side setback, it's manipulated to be, I mean.
Twelve feet.
Well, the the setback would be ten feet.
Right.
Right.
Okay, ten. I thought it was twelve on the, excuse me, on the plan, it says it's twelve feet.
Right, on the planet says it's twelve feet, but it is a fourteen thousand, four hundred and thirty square foot lot. So because it's undersized in an R twenty zone, it would take the the next zone underneath that, which is our ten. Which is twenty front, twenty rear and ten sides. That's why it's that's why it's the way it is.
Oh, well, why wouldn't that be on the plan from the from the architect? Excuse me, from the surveyor?
These are these are new regulations that not many that people are still still getting used to.
Including the butter.
Yeah, yeah, they're they've passed by state law a couple of years ago.
Okay. And the reason why it's going to be on this side instead of the fifty-five feet that's available on the other side is because of to make if I could just hear what Ralph wants to say about that.
Hey, Jim, how you doing?
I'm fine.
Good. It's just because it's existing, so rather than building an entirely new structure on the other side, it just seemed after looking at a number of different ways of trying to get you know, a couple more bedrooms, the easiest route to take. One, it's there. You know, two, there were no you know, windows on that side, on the north side of that structure. And why I dropped off a copy of the plans in your mailbox, so happy to to chat with you about it if you had any questions or concerns about it, so I didn't, I didn't think you did, and maybe you don't, but you know, been trying to keep the lines of communication absolutely as open as possible.
Not not a problem at all. The problem that I have is that when I got the plans and saw how close it was to the property line, it was a little bit of a problem about me trying to figure out. I didn't realize it was ten feet now instead of twelve feet.
Okay.
I'm assuming it was surveyed correctly. Am I correct in saying it's surveyed by a surveyor?
Yeah, Todd Chaplin at Mount Hope Engineering.
Okay, I just nothing on the plan that says that it's there's no certificate or anything on it. That's what I just wanted to know.
Did I submit that separately here?
There's no survey on the list of drawings uploaded that I can see.
Is this the one with the CAD file?
Do you have a copy of the survey here?
Pretty sure I submitted that here in the first go around.
I don't have it.
Okay. Because I know that was a requirement of the application.
I might chime in. I think what would be helpful is just to have the and not to be a stickler, but to try to understand both sides of this is that you know, just have some documentation with the survey noting the current corner of the garage, both corners of the garage from the property line. You know, that way it can be checked later on, you know, assuming that house is, you know, being in it, it's pretty old and that. I I suspect the garage would come down because it cannot support a second floor because it's probably not on a rat slab, which is not structurally capable of of holding that. So my thought is to if 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 anything, protect, you know, work with both parties and protect Mr. Hitchen in in noting where it is and make sure that there's no gray area on far as far as how it would possibly encroach because we all know, you know, that can happen. And when something's already in the ground, it's tough to take it out of the ground. So I think you know, protecting the neighbor, not to say Mr. McCuskey's doing anything wrong. I just think it's it would be helpful to have the survey with with the existing conditions noted on it. And if you have that, it would be great to submit to us.
So the applicant, the 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 architect submitted, use this use the survey to make this drawing.
But good.
The I think the discrepancy is the the way the the law has changed back and forth of the two years, over the past two years, it used to be in direct proportion of the substandardness of the lot. So that could be it could be why it says twelve.
But my 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 question is not with what the new code is or the twelve feet is is just properly identifying. I've I've worked on numerous projects. It's who you can say that including submissions to CRMC and they would grab an existing plan that is not current, is not within the, you know, certain zones. And all of a sudden, you're between you're on the fence of two zones, right? So I think is getting the most current you know, survey and noting the current locations off the property, not just pulling that off somebody else's plot plan and saying, I didn't realize that was X hole or that wasn't right, you know. So if we have Todd's plot plan, we can, you know, we can note.
I think it would reflect.
Mention, is that you understand what I'm saying?
I think I think the the survey would reflect twelve feet because there's it could be a different interpretation and
So Todd's survey.
It's it's pretty well known. It's not it's not incorrect, but the the distances between the lot line and the the structure is not incorrect. The setback line could be, it says here twelve, it is ten, but it could be going by last year's legislation.
Yeah, yeah, no, and that's not that wasn't my kind of overall thought. I guess it was like, you know, this is not the current plan. The architect drew this on. Is that Todd's plan he drew on? All right, so. I was just trying to make sure we cover it basically.
Yeah. No, 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 I mean, so.
Just trying to mitigate, you know.
I understand, I understand.
Of course, it's existing. I think it's not as I I understand like if what would be preferable is to get the actual survey that locates the garage.
I think that's wrote by, well, my point was that if if that's.
But it's like when whatever the difference is, we may be talking inches, we're not talking about feet and we what we were proving is that it's lining up over the existing garage. So it's not so.
Yeah, I was in, I'm not.
I mean, clearly, I think it would we would it be nice to have the survey and have that located in the ideal world?
I mean, this this, for all intents and purposes, is the survey that Greg Yulon, as the architect, just overlaid his plans on top of it. So that one, one foot, nine inches came from the survey, not from not from the architect.
Time that that mean it's easy to get it distorted. I mean.
Okay.
Ralph, Ralph.
Have a survey.
I do. I mean, I've got a digital copy and I've got it in my
condition the approval on delivery of the survey to Aaron prior to issuance.
So perfect. So I think, yeah, we can conditionally do that. Mr. Hitchen, do you have any, I mean? Yeah, I just I wanted just to say that it it the reason why I'm saying this is because the portion of the garage, the existing garage on the property is not parallel to the survey line. So the side which would be the unfortunately, it doesn't say it would be the side that would be toward the water, which is I would say the north side is closer to the property line than where the sign, the one point nine foot is located on this paper that I have. And I want to just make sure that the I'm going to say the distal, the back portion of the garage, which would be the north side of the garage toward the water is looks appears not to be parallel to the front of it and might be closer to the line than what one thinks. It's very close. I mean, we're only talking about at the top one foot, nine inches. At the north's portion, I think it's I want to make sure that it's on his property. Do you see what I'm saying on that? Excuse me, I don't mean to
Yeah, I
beat a dead horse on it.
I understand. I I can see what you're saying. Can you see that this line is not parallel to that line? So in fact, that point is going to be less than one foot nine.
So so we're
Either this has been drawn wrong. Can we show you what we're talking about?
Sure. I mean, I think I've got it right here.
You can see that it's not exactly parallel and what has been dimensioned is and I I think we're talking about inches. I don't think but
It might be fine.
Saying is the the rear part of the garage is actually closer to the property line than the front part of the garage. The way it's been drawn, it's not been drawn parallel. Now, maybe that's the way it was drafted. I we don't know that.
But either way, the corner of the garage is still on my lot. It doesn't.
We don't know that. Ralph, that's what I'm trying to make sure that it's true, that is that. Can you hear me?
Yes, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just want to make sure that it is on your property and not that there's any problem with it, but it would be terrible if it wasn't.
What is I think the survey would show that it would it's on applicant's property.
I I think that's to me, I can see that, but it's the amount of the variance that may change. That's what I I there's no ways this is off by that amount that it wouldn't be on their property.
You're saying you're saying it could be like, you know, one foot, three, one foot, two.
It could be. And I don't know.
I think it's I think it's less than that.
It'd be nice to have this survey, a real survey. The stamp survey.
I'm sure Todd has it.
What we say, what you suggest that is.
Well, I think there's I think I would almost suggest that you leave it to the applicant because it's really his risk, right? He's asked for a certain variance here. And if he delivers the survey to Aaron and then Aaron reviews that and finds out that will know it's additional six inches on that corner. Then his variance is not sufficient to allow him to get a building permit. So if he's wrong, he has to come back to us and ask for whatever the difference is. If he's right, then no harm to follow. He gets to go ahead, but does that make sense? You know, I don't think it's a risk to the town to approve it as long as it's conditioned on the survey delivery and Aaron has the ability to to verify that in the field.
Well, see, but we already we're kind of understand that the it's already not if you're forgetting technical, that the ask is even more than the one foot, nine. Well, see, but we already, we're kind of understanding that, that it's already not, if you're forgetting technical, that the ask is even more than the one foot nine. Because the closer point according to the, the plan that we have on hand is, is the rear of the garage, which without having the survey shows that the ask is in 1-8, 1-7, 1-6, 1-5, what, what is the, right? We're not, it goes to the widest point. So we already know that, so we already know that this is not the, what you were asking for.
Well, I don't, I think, I think.
He'd asked for nine feet, right?
No, 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 no. We're, we're saying we're based on the one foot nine, right? If we're getting tech, well, I'm not, you know, if we're asking based on the one foot nine and by looking at the picture, that garage isn't parallel to the, to the property line. I think that's what she said. Which whatever, it's still on your property, right? So we still say, okay, it's basically you're building on something that's already there. But if in your comment, if we approve based on one foot nine and then the rear of the garage is one foot four, then that voids the building permit because it doesn't, it's not so, we just go deeper into the rabbit hole of, if it's not, if this is incorrect.
If it is incorrect, then, then you're right. The, the, the applicant then has to come back and ask for the proper relief because he won't get a building permit without it. But you could, you could certainly condition it upon delivery of a survey that, that provides the dimension at the rear corner.
Well, but then we have to recalculate your ask because it's not one foot nine.
Well, no, yeah, that's right.
It's not, it's not one foot nine and five eights.
But if it turns out it is and, and, and then Aaron can issue the permit and he can move ahead. If it turns out it's not and the surveyor can't, can't confirm that for Aaron, then the applicant has to come back and ask again.
Yeah, I mean, to me, you're building on something that's already here. Like, I, I get it, but if, if now that it's gone down that, i- if it's not that, then, then it's technically void.
Yeah, that's right. The approval doesn't get you the building.
Even though I see if it's there, like we've built stuff like here, we're going to build something that's already here, like, okay, it's there.
Yeah, that, that approval would not get him the building.
This could just be a drafting error. I mean, that's the thing, without seeing the survey, could have been drawn that little bit off just a drafting error. I don't, I don't know that.
And that's why I, I'm suggesting maybe you just give him the opportunity to sort that out with Aaron, rather than making him come back again. Because it may be in fact one nine.
Fine, I think, you know, these are.
Just to be clear, so Todd sent me the CAD, which I then forwarded to the architect. So he, I mean, his shading of, of the existing structure and whatnot was done by the architect. I don't think he would have manipulated the site plan in terms of where the structure is on the lot. Um, and I don't know if the, the one nine and five eights, if, you know, how that was specific spot was chosen versus the middle of the garage versus the end of the garage or, or whatever, um, just to show that it's clearly within, you know, 10 feet. So should I be asking for more relief than, than what I asked for based on the one nine? Should I just ask for more relief?
I'm just saying, because it's the architect could have just. Unfortunately, I, I think, I think we have to, I think, I guess, when did, did Todd perform this, the survey or did he just pull a survey?
No, 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 he, he, his.
So I, I think.
His crew came out and did the survey and did a elevation certificate and.
You got a copy? Are you looking at a copy?
Well, that's it. I mean, this, this is exactly what he sent and Greg just put, you know.
So I think the helpful thing to do is say, Todd, can you go out there and have two guys pin the corner of the house at the property line?
Yeah.
Like when we'll build a house, you'll pin the foundation in the ground, you know, and that's their assuming risk for locating the house where it's supposed to be. So they are capable of pinning it professionally, accurately on the survey. So that can kind of put questions to bed, you know, as far as distance in that now is technicality. Normally we'd say, well, build on it, it's already there, right? So it's not a matter of me thinking, it doesn't
If I could.
Change the fact that it still is where it is. It's just a matter of.
Unfortunately, even if the board was, was willing to say, well, we'll just give you another six inches of approval, right? Um, they, they can't do that because the, the legal standard is that they have to, you have to be asking for the minimum relief necessary in order to achieve the goal of your, your build. And so they can't just say, well, you get an extra foot, you know, that, that unfortunately wouldn't pass a legal muster.
Right. But I just want to understand Jim's concern because whether it's one nine or whether it's one three, what's the difference in terms?
As long as, as long as it's, excuse me, as long as it's appropriate on your property line, it's not a problem. It's just that it seems to me that if it had a class one surveyor certificate on it, I would be very happy to say that it looks fine because it's going to be on your property, but I have to make sure that it is. And I don't see that. So I, my honest opinion would be if you had a continuance, after you get the class one survey to know the exact measurements that you want for the variance, then, then that would be appropriate.
Okay. Well, I have, I have that survey. That's what, I mean, I guess I should have submitted both, even though this is redundant to.
It should have been. Well, it's only because it doesn't look quite honestly like official. It just looks like it's plotted onto it. And I won't say willy nilly, but it doesn't look official based on the fact of what I see. And I want to make sure that it's on your property, which I'm sure that it is because it's been there for a long time. So I, I don't think there is a problem. But if, if it's not the right variance, you, you're going through a whole thing again. You're going to have to do it again. So you might as well do the right variance and get it done once.
Okay, well, I, I have the.
I, I think if we, like we discussed already, if we approve it, he sends us a, he sends a site plan and it's not what it is, he's going to have to come back. But if we approve it and it is what it is.
Well, why do that?
So that he doesn't have to return.
Mr. McCloskey can make that call. I think we, well, if this didn't come up, we probably wouldn't have gone that deep into it, right? And now the, you know, it's been discussed, I think.
I think it's important. It's the rear corner, the rear corner of the garage that needs to be in, in dimension.
The both, I mean, you're there.
And then we'll know exactly what, what those two.
Well, if you look at the, um, all right, let's see here. A2 dot two. It looks like there's an extension onto the back of the garage, like kind of a lean tube. And I think that's where we're seeing a closer corner, back corner than the existing. Right there.
You're looking at the, the elevation. That, that corner can't be closer than.
Well, that's, that's so. So there's additional building on the back of the existing structure.
Well, that doesn't.
This is proposed.
Yes.
So it's not there. That's not.
I know. So, so it's closer than it is now.
Yeah. It's going to be even.
Exactly.
But that's, that's, that additional structure, that's not actually on the garage. That's the.
No.
That's in the.
That has nothing to do with it, garage.
Oh, that's in the. That's the mudroom or the stairwell.
Oh, that's, okay. So that's in the, in the middle of the house. So.
I, I just.
From there, it looked different.
At this point, it's, sorry, at this point, I think, you know, we've, every time we come, I learn something new and you get down a different path. But I, I think it's in, in your hands, like I, to say, I'm going to go with this or not. And, and honestly, I didn't realize, you know, how deep it, perfect it had to be, you know, maybe within an inch or something. But I think for the sake of, they were bringing up the point, I would probably in the best interest, at least pin the two corners of the garage. So now hopefully, you know, satisfy them. And if there's any other, do you have any other, any other concern, concerns, Mr. Hitchens, other than just locate the garage?
No.
I think if that's what it's going to take, I don't know how to unsee something, so to speak, but.
Is there a, a soffit that needs to be included as well? All right.
Uh, overhangs don't matter.
It is, it's drawn as a very minimized sofa. So I, I think that's the juncture we're at and I don't know how to answer it. I mean, I know it seems to be a little tedious, but I think.
Well, I will, I mean, regardless, I will, Aaron, I'll send you the original CAD for whatever, the original survey from Mount Hope, which was done, you know, this fall, which is, they generated that line. So, um.
You have it?
I mean, so, so one, one other.
I'll, I'll, I mean, that's what, as Greg just put Spring Street Studio on it instead of Mount Hope Engineering. It's not, um, he didn't come up with a whole nother site plan himself.
No, it's.
But, but for you to see it and for Jim to see it and say, okay, there's a license number on there and, and whatnot to validate it, then.
Essentially, it becomes part of the record. It becomes an insurance policy for the Butters and the town, you know, to, to say if that surveyor was wrong for any reason, you know, it's, it's their issue to deal with, not yours. So having a stamp, stamp survey on record is, is a good thing.
I, I think we, you should have, um, Mount Hope just pin that, the, the two corners of the garage. And then I think we'll know exactly what your, um, what the variance is going to be.
Okay. Okay.
Should, should we ask about timing? Is this a continuance to, when is that next?
January.
I mean, there's. Continuance to the January meeting?
There's no other way to like.
We, I mean, if you want to, we can put a, a condition, we can vote on it with the condition that it meets that amount. And if it doesn't, then you're going to have to wait till January.
But I think the motion needs like a change to include what you just said.
Yeah. So the, the motion, um, I'm not very good at all how to, how to say motions.
It'll look great on paper when we, when we do the minutes.
We'll do it approving the one foot nine as, as a setback, but on the condition that the survey you submit have the corners of, um, pinned and it.
Okay.
You don't need a larger variance. And if you do, then you're going to have to come back in January.
Okay.
Does, does that make sense?
Very good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So you make an emotional proof under those conditions?
I.
No, you gotta, you gotta say that again. So hold on, we gotta do the right.
Actually, we should, and actually we should close the public comment if we're ready to do that.
Uh, Mr. Hitchens, do you have anything else to add to the?
No, not at all.
Well, thank you for calling in.
Thank you.
Any, give, Mr. McCloskey anything else to add?
No, I think I know what needs to be done.
I appreciate it. So we.
Would you like me to restate the motion that Ms. Horowitz just made?
Yes, go ahead.
I believe the motion was, uh, to approve this, um, application. Uh, and is this, Aaron, is this dimensional and?
Yeah, it's a dimensional special use permit.
Okay. So, uh, we'll do it in two parts, I guess. So with regard to the dimensional variance, uh, as Ms. Horowitz moved to approve this application for dimensional variance, conditional upon delivery, uh, to the town of a survey, uh, identifying lot line distance to the structure at both corners of the side garage. And evidence in that survey that the variance is no greater than the one foot nine approved here tonight.
Well, it's not one foot nine. It's one foot nine less 10 feet minus the one foot nine, right?
No, it's, no, that's, that number is correct. What, what with the confusion was earlier, I believe, is that it shows 12 feet. So when we do the math, it, it's, it doesn't.
But you're requesting a variance of, um, eight foot three. That's the variance you're requesting. Cause eight foot three plus one foot nine is giving you the 10, the 10 feet. So.
Eight foot three.
Thank you.
Isn't eight, eight two and five eights, it is nine, one nine and.
Three eights.
Okay.
With that clarification, that's, I think that's, if you're on that motion, there are a second.
I second it.
So a motion has been made with the condition. I'm not going to see the. There's no more discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. All opposed?
Gotcha. And then we.
Additionally, on that.
Special use permit.
That works hard for the. I do something every day.
I'm into the specials. Have we voted on?
We, we have not, no, just the dimensional variance. So the special use permit, I don't believe needs a, needs, it doesn't need the same condition. You can live with the condition on the first part. That'll protect.
Yes.
All right. So now.
A, a motion to approve the special.
Special use permit. We get a second.
Second.
A motion has been made to approve, to approve the special use permit. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Proved again. Thank you. You have a great night. Thanks for coming in. Okay, moving along. Number three. Louis Campos, Christine Virene, property located 91 Holson Avenue, tax assessor map four, lot 156A. Applicant seeks a dimensional variance to construct the front porch that encourages four feet into the front setback, four feet. No way.
Hi, my name is Luke Campos and I'm representing my daughter who owns our, our property at 91 Holson Avenue. Her name is Christine Rainey. And basically what we're requesting is there's a entryway porch that is existing there. It is currently, it's eight feet wide, four feet long with two steps, which encompasses coming out six feet. What we're proposing to do is take that deck, make it 16 feet wide and come out an additional two feet, eight feet by, uh, six feet and extending it with two steps, which would take it an additional two feet towards the road at Holson Avenue. So I don't, I'm not looking for relief from the left or the right. We meet the setbacks for that. And the total deck would be 16 feet by six feet with two steps. So which make it 16 by eight, which it is currently, uh, eight by six. That's basically what we're proposing to do. And my initial thing, I was a little bit unaware. What I did initially, I measured from the last step to the edge of the road, which was incorrect, which was 27 feet. Now it would make it 25 feet with the additional two feet. But I'm seeking relief for the two feet, uh, extending that, the, the deck two feet and just keeping two steps there.
So do you know the distance from your property line to the edge of the pavement? Did you?
It's 20, it's 27 feet currently. And it's to the edge of the pavement. This would make it 25 feet.
So that isn't necessarily the property line, all right? So.
The problem, so.
No.
And you find this enough where the property line was set back from the edge of the street. It's still, it's not looking like they write on the edge of the property because they saw distance.
I only mention it so that we get the dimensions right.
So this is a, uh, this is a common, um, a common problem and common fence point. They have a very large right of way in all of those streets. And it's just, that's just the way they were made. Um, it appears like he has a lot of front yard, but survey markers say that he does not.
So there's probably a lot of similar situations on that street.
Yes.
So that's another. So any questions, other questions?
Would you be covering the porch or just leaving it open as it currently is?
It's going to be open. It's not covered.
Did they talk to anybody in the neighborhood about it?
Excuse me, sir.
Did you talk to anyone in the neighborhood about your proposal?
Yeah, I talked to Mr. Bragger who lives next door and I've talked to Mr. Cabral across the street. And I forget the lady's name right, of course, she's a retired school teacher, but I don't know her name.
What was their reaction?
No, they would, they would said they had no problem with it.
Good.
Everybody told me they had no problem.
So the variance is for four feet.
Yep.
Um, because of the huge right of way.
All right, anybody, anybody else? Butters, interested parties, anybody online? Okay, anybody up for making another motion?
I'd make a motion that we.
Like Tetris?
No.
Go ahead.
I think a motion that we approve, uh, was the variance that Spencer submitted for.
There you go. Thanks. Motion has been made. Uh, we're good with the discussion. Like, should we put it to vote? Like two per to vote. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Much easier than the one foot nine. Okay. Number four. Alicia, Alicia Nunes, uh, look for property located zero twenty eight, twenty eight E. Avenue. Ruins Island, tax assessor map seventy five lot twenty five K. Applicant seeks retroactive approval for a special use permit in a dimensional variance for a deck that would be built in the rear setback or non performing structure in a residential zone. Gio, your favorite. Did you brush up since last?
I'm just keeping my mouth shut this time.
Okay, assume this is, uh, anybody look to approach? Is there online?
If there's anyone online for this application, please dial in now.
Come back to that one?
I know we have an a butter here, uh, for this application. That's all.
Come again?
I know we have an a butter here for this application, but.
Kid, in the. Can you hear it no better without a, I mean, I don't know where, is it just an informal conversation?
I, I think unfortunately, it's not going to, to allow your butter to become part of the record. We have to have the presentation of the petition first. I think it's a matter, I don't, I don't, I hate to make a butter come back again if it gets continued.
So is, is this, this was built and? Am I reading that correctly? It was built and now we're going backwards here?
Yes.
That makes sense.
Yeah, but it also submitted a, a letter as well.
Forget this letter?
Just a letter.
All right. So, so I guess we're gonna have to come back to this. Some form.
We, we could certainly put it off until the last agenda item is, is done in case the applicant.
Why would you do that in fairness?
Comes up.
The others who are here. All right. So we're gonna, uh, uh, jump ahead to number five, Nancy Glenn Zidka, uh, for property located eleven Schaefer Drive, tax assessor map fifty one, lot two fifty five. Uh, applicant seeks dimensional variance to extend a deck in the rear of the dwelling, encroaching at ten point seven feet into the rear setback. We're, we've met our deck capacity. I'm sorry. No more decks to that. Welcome, Zane, address your record, please.
Nancy Zidka, eleven Schaefer Drive.
Tell us about your, your deck.
Um, my house was built in nineteen ninety and our deck is falling apart. It's a pressure treated wood rotting deck that needs to be replaced. And we have never really used our deck in the back of the house because it's quite narrow to put a decent sized table and chairs around. We usually sit in the front yard under a, a red maple tree. Um, so I felt if we were going to spend money to replace our deck and we're going to be using wolf decking, our contractor is here, we're going to have white, a white railing um, with a like a slightly darker than that base on the deck, um, which kind of matches the color of the current deck. Uh, we felt that it would make sense to, we're gonna spend money to replace the deck anyway. We might as well have it be a usable deck. And, um, I did speak with my neighbors. The only neighbor really in question is the people that are behind us, which faces west. Their house is, um, on Stonegate Drive and it faces, their, their, the back of their house faces Quonset View Farm, where I'm on Schaefer Drive, which is a side street in front of them. And they're really the only house that will be impacted by this. We're very dear friends with our neighbors. I do have a, and you should have in your records, they did send a text, they're in Virginia, um, visiting family, but they did send a text saying they have no objection to us asking for the ability to bump out our deck six feet. The neighbors on our other side are our twenty and this doesn't impact them at all. We do also have a berm between us that is on our property that provides, you know, privacy between the two of us anyway. And the property behind us that is our thirty that we would be impacting, encroaching into that our thirty space by ten foot, se, ten feet, seven inches. Um, there's lots of vegetation. We have Leland Cypress. We have, they have a huge cherry tree and lilacs and everything else. So we, we can't see them and they really can't see us as it is now. Um, so anyway, that's where we're, that's where we stand.
So you're just extending it six feet the way around, basically?
Yes, we're bumping out the width of it, which is eight feet now. So it's a long deck. It's off of my kitchen. Um, it's a fairly long deck, but it's a long, narrow deck. So we're just going to extend it out an additional six feet from the eight. It'll be fourteen feet. Hopefully.
Questions? Two? I'm good. Butters, interested parties?
Just the butter letter I mentioned there in Virginia right now, but it is in the, in the application.
Said, sent from an iPhone.
Right, but it was submitted in the application.
Was it notarized?
No, but my survey was. But a Bing.
I think, uh, if you don't have any other questions, would we cause the, the Butters piece, uh? But. I did. Right?
Yep.
Butters, interested parties, online people? Is there nothing else better to do?
So close the public.
Um, would we like to make a motion?
I'll, I'll make.
Turn it.
I'll make a motion to approve the application with the reduced setback. Um, where thirty feet, thirty feet's required. So the applicant is requesting a variance of one to seven, ten point seven feet of variance is being requested.
Second.
Second.
Thank you.
You know, discussion before we take the vote. Okay, would like to call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Appreciate your consideration.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
There's nothing else?
One housekeeping thing, uh, there's not gonna be any, a December meeting. Um, there will be a January meeting.
Uh, the other one online, you going back to that or no?
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Nothing?
There's no activity.
So.
I would suggest continuing it to the January meeting.
All right. So make a motion to continue? How do I?
Yeah, move to continue item four to the January meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah.
For, oh, uh.
You, you can allow that, Mr. Chairman, if you don't have objection from your board, if, if you.
Well, in all fairness, I think he came here tonight, the, the other petitioner just did a no show. So I think, you know.
Before you listen to the a butter, who seconded that last?
But that's a little.
Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Uh, thanks for letting me just have a moment. Um, I appreciate all you guys. I know you're all volunteers.
No, 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 he just stated his name for the record and all that.
All right. My name, I, I'm Chris Kerwin. And I am the a butter.
Your address as well?
Yes, my home address is ten Harrison Avenue in Newport. I'm here because of the property at O two eight Etta Avenue on Prudence Ave, Avenue, Prudence Island. And I am the butter at O two three Madison Avenue. I am the director butter. I front their entire south side. I've not met Ms. Nunes and, and I really don't object to what she, what she has purchased from the gentleman who created this problem. I contacted the building official, Matt Kent, at the time it happened and asked why I hadn't been notified. Again, I don't really have an objection. I just had some conditions I wanted to see put in place. I'm concerned that I'll have to come back again. And there'll be another no show. So I'm not sure what the process will be to contact her. So I don't have to make this appearance once again. That's my only thing I had to say about it. I don't mind coming out and I do look forward to meeting Ms. Nunes, but I don't want to continue to come and not have my, uh, time wasted.
It's not the worst way to spend your Thursday.
Well, there are no Patriots, Celtics or Bruins. So I'm, I'm in good shape. That's why I appreciate. I appreciate all of you guys coming here on your volunteer time, but thank you very much for the moment.
Sure. And I think for coming, it's probably worth noting that you can, you can submit if you have some requests, uh, for.
Submit them. So if you're not able to come, we have on the record.
I had submitted an email. I had submitted an email and a very simple request. There, uh, that, in fact, the the owner who had built the property before he sold it to Ms. Nunes, I had a discussion with him about it. And there's such minor requests that he had no objection to it whatsoever. But then he sold the property. So that's why I'm here.
All right.
All right. So I'll, uh, January. Thank you.
Mr. Kerwin, you can, uh, just contact me. I can, we can talk.
Okay.
We get in touch with, uh, with the applicant.
All right. I've, I've been over there several times. We've missed each other on numerous occasions. That's the way it works.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barry.
Okay. We're good?
Yeah.
Chair, make them, would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion's made to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
You laughing at me?
No.
Thought you winked at me.
No.